We need each other here.
We do. It's a team effort. Although I just put it in the computer and into the cloud.
Six six nine zero, okay.
How about the download app?
We got that, whatever it takes. Maybe here, but why don't we do that? Can you give Paul our password?
The wifi? Yeah, it's narrow cable, all lowercase, and that's weird. And then two five eight. Yes, sure. Right now? Yeah, we are on, we are recording. Anyways, there. About how the meeting order? We have just one item on our agenda tonight. We're going to be talking about the proposed revisions to the land use ordinance in response to the housing legislation and Jamel Torres is here with us again to walk us through this discussion. Jamel had provided a new document that we had requested at the last meeting and I found it particularly helpful because he did highlight specifically the changes in the legislation that are equally required than the ones that are just optional or recommended. And as I'm sure you could see, most of them are in fact required. There are a few options, a few choices, but not, not all that many actually. So there are, I think, several different ways that we could go through this information and have this discussion. And we might, we might come at it from a couple of different directions. But one way would be simply to go through page by page, Jamel's suggestions, his, his recommendations, and do it that way. As I was looking at this material, I'd like to hear from the rest of you, but as I was looking at it, I found it easier to think about in terms of the, you know, the three main topic areas that are part of this conversation. And, you know, those are the, the density bonus issue, the multiple dwelling unit piece, and the accessory dwelling piece. And a couple of the comments that I have are about organization and how the material is presented. And again, I, I found it easier to think about and to try to make some sense of if I thought about it by, by topic area. Obviously, there are, you know, portions of it that, you know, there's a lot in common with this stuff, but so I, I think I would, I would perhaps suggest that we might begin by topic area and have a conversation about the issues that you see, any of the specific recommendations that Jamel has made that you are in favor of, or if you have suggestions about, about changes. And I also have a couple of broad suggestions that I think affect the whole package. So we may talk about it in that one too. So again, coming at it from a couple of different angles might be the, might be the best choice. I have a couple of updates on the CID recommendation and the special family and so forth, but I'm thinking Jamel is with us and so perhaps we hold that conversation until after we finish the discussion about the L U O. And so we can, we can talk about that. We have minutes to review and we may possibly, as a result of the CID piece, we might need to talk about the possibility of reschedule in the February planning board meetings because of some conflict. So anyway, let's get back to that. So thoughts about how you'd like to approach this conversation and, and Jamel, if, if, if you have a specific thought, please share that with us as well.
Thank you. Can you guys hear me okay? Thank, thank you for having me tonight. I will follow your lead and answer any questions that you have.
Others, how are you most comfortable approaching this? What would you like to do?
Well, I found it very helpful, this latest document that is the nineteenth, and that is Jamel. So I've gone through it. I'm actually comfortable just going through sequentially.
Others? Brandon?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Peter, you're in a great.
I'm fine.
Okay. Well, let's, let's proceed that way then. If, if we are going to approach it that way, I might put one of my issues out on the table so that you can be thinking about it as we're going through these pieces in the document. And that is that the, one of the, the recommendations, one of the required pieces is, is to, to look at the, the issue of additional dwellings and the density bonus, actually the ADUs as well. All of those things have a, have a part in the performance standards and Jamel had recommended several modifications in article, whatever the article is, Article eight, which is performance requirements and standards. And as I was looking at that, I have a few specific questions that I'll save until we get to that piece. But one thought I had was that it felt to me that it might, it might flow better and it might provide better information, more information, if we restructured the first section of performance requirements and made it about dwellings generally, residential dwellings, and put all of the, all of the pieces that are relevant to that in that first, in that first section. So those would be the change that Jamel had suggested was in multifamily dwellings. But I'm suggesting that maybe we think about a section that is about dwelling units broadly and include subsections addressing single family, two family, multi-family, conversions and restructure, reconstructions, which is existing. A section on the multiple dwelling units allowed, the additional dwelling units. A piece on affordable housing developments and dwellings. And then finally, a piece on accessory dwelling units. And the reason I'm, I'm suggesting that is that it feels to me that if all of that was in a single location, it would be easier to, I think, understand the requirements for any of those individual dwelling unit pieces. And I think it would give us the opportunity to add a little bit more information. For instance, some of the information that's pretty important appears principally as a footnote currently. And I'm thinking that a little additional narrative would be, would be useful in terms of people picking this up and being able to understand that. So.
Do you mind if I ask a question about that request? Could you, just because I'm not there with you, could you just highlight or name the sections that you would like within one section, just so I get it correctly? If we were to do that work for, for the town?
Yeah, so. Okay. So Article eight currently, the first, find it here, the first piece of that is about two family dwellings, new and conversions. And then it goes to conversion or reconstruction to a two, two or multi-family dwelling. Then it's multi-family dwellings. So there are three sections that have to do with dwellings.
Yep.
So what I'm suggesting is that we, we put in a section that addresses all the different types of dwelling units. Maybe we name the section dwelling units. And then have a subsection for single family, two family, multi-family, conversions. The multiple dwelling units allow, I'm not, I, I didn't come up with the, probably the appropriate names for these subsections, but it would address the additional units that are allowed under the legislation. That piece on the affordable housing dwelling units. And then finally, accessory dwelling units. You had put together a fairly extensive section on accessory, on ADUs. And so essentially, we, you know, move, move that into this new subsection.
Thank you.
Does that, what do you think about that? Does that make sense to you or?
To me?
Yes.
Thank you. Yes, I, I think that that makes sense. We didn't take the approach of trying to reorganize the ordinance.
Yeah. Yeah.
I think that may have, I'm not sure that would have been a very popular approach for this first series of meetings, but we're happy to reorganize it if that's what the planning board desires.
The only reason I, I suggest it is that, you know, some of this is it's somewhat convoluted and it's, you know, you need to spend some time with it to understand it. And I'm thinking about people picking up the ordinance and being able to understand what the requirements are. And so it was strictly for the purposes of trying to make it, to provide a bit more explanation and information, make it easier for people to understand.
Paula, I probably wasn't listening carefully enough, but did you have a plan for where you placed that? Which article or create a new article or replace it?
Yeah, I, I think it, I think it would probably fit in Article eight, which is the performance requirements and standards. And so it would become, you know, the way I was thinking about it, it would become section one, essentially. And there would be three or five, seven subsections, one for each of the different types of dwellings.
So there would be some renumbering all the way down to, or should I have worked?
Yeah, it, it would have to, it would have to be renumbered because sections one, two, and three in the existing article would be implicated.
Yeah.
Sometimes it's easier to just have a deleted section and leave the ones that, because people are used to certain section numbers.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We, we have to look at that definitely. Anyway, you know, I don't think we're quite there yet, but I wanted to put it on the table early on. So while we're talking about this, you can think about whether or not you think it works or if you want to take some different approach or how we come together. So let's go to the beginning of the document. Jamel, did you want to lead us through sequentially your, your document?
Yes, I would. So based on the discussion at the last meeting and earlier this month, we changed the memo to include whether the proposed modification is recommended or required by state statute. So if you go to page two of the memo, Article three, nonconformance, we went page by page, article by article. So the first subsection is in Article three, nonconformance. This is a recommended modification, just to be consistent and clear for folks looking to put an accessory dwelling unit on their property. So basically, it's a new subsection, section four point G point five, with language indicating that if an accessory dwelling unit is created or expanded with a legal nonconforming structure that already exists, it's allowed, but it shall not make the nonconforming structure more nonconforming, which I think is pretty typical for other kinds of proposals and legal nonconforming structures. It just tightens up the language just to make sure that accessory dwelling units are specifically called out.
So this wouldn't apply to a accessory dwelling unit that's not within the structure?
I, can you repeat that? Sorry.
Well, it, it seems to only apply to an expansion that's within a structure, not separate.
Correct. Yep. So it'd be a broken up, single family home, maybe within someone's garage or barn, that kind of, that kind of accessory dwelling unit type.
And so Jack, if it was a, if it was a standalone ADU, it would have to meet the setback requirements and so forth anyway.
Okay. So you couldn't, you couldn't erect a nonconforming ADU. Right?
Can you repeat that? I'm having a hard time hearing you, Jack.
Oh, you couldn't erect a nonconforming ADU?
Correct. You, it, you, it would have to meet the applicable setbacks. There is a recommended provision that we'll get to within ADUs that allows for them on legal nonconforming lots of record. But that's not part of this language. This is specifically for units attached or within a struct, an existing structure.
Okay, thanks.
Well, I, I'm going to the language here. We're talking now about an, an ADU that's created or expanded within a nonconforming structure. It doesn't say, what if you expand or construct, for that matter, a, a, a attached ADU that reduces the setback from the road, make it more nonconforming? Traditionally, we would say that can't be done, but this seems, the language that's recommended here suggests that it would make it more nonconforming.
You, the way that it's written is that it, it can't make, if there's a existing nonconforming structure, it can't, like, so say the setback is 20 feet and there's an existing structure that's within 10 feet of the property line. So it'd be 10 feet over the 20 foot setback. You couldn't make the, you couldn't make it more than 10 feet. Does that make sense? So you can't make it any worse or any closer to the, to the building line or property line.
You can't make it less than 10 feet.
Excuse me?
You couldn't make it less than 10 feet.
You couldn't make it, that, that's just an example. Yes, but you couldn't make it more nonconforming. So it, it at least, this provision, you know, provides guidance or language to ensure that the nonconformance isn't made worse.
Oh, I think, maybe I'm just confused with the word shall, shall not here. This could be, you're saying it cannot, you cannot expand it or construct it in a way to make it more nonconforming.
Correct. Yep.
That's so good.
But.
Again, this, this is recommended, so we can strike it all together if it's providing more confusion. So this isn't a required thing. This is just something that we've done before in other main communities.
Shall not. No, I think that, I'm sorry, I just, maybe it just, the, I thought it, what's proposed, the, the language is ambiguous and I interpreted it differently. I understand what you're trying to do and I agree with what you're trying to do. But I think what you're really mean is I'm looking at the actual, that if, if there is a proposed to be created or expanded, it, it cannot be done that way in a way that would make the nonconforming structure more nonconforming.
Correct. Yep. We can rewrite it in a way that's a little more clear, if that's helpful. If that's what the board desires, we can, we can work on that one.
Yeah, in a sense, we're all okay with the intent here, which is how it's said.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, Jack, when, when I was looking at this, I was thinking back to some discussion the planning board had. That was quite a long time ago. I can't remember where we wound up on this and it had to do with the definition of increase in nonconformity. And we have had some discussion around, you know, what constitutes that situation? And so if a, say a cottage was nonconforming because it was too close to the lake or too close to the road, too close to anything, didn't need a setback. And this ADU situation is probably a good example. If they came in and said, okay, we want to construct an ADU and it won't be any closer than 10 feet, but there's going to be more building there. Does the fact that there is more building within the 20 foot setback constitute an increase in nonconformity? And do you remember that discussion, Jack? Do you remember the outcome? Because the definitions and so forth don't address that head on.
Yeah, no, I remember when, when it came up, it was as long as it's not any closer. The fact that there's more building that's within that setback was okay, which I personally wasn't really keen about.
I'm not, I, I've never been comfortable with that and I can't remember the rationale. Jamal, maybe you, you know what the, what the situation is with that. I mean, the definition of increase in nonconformity generally, why it would not include that situation? You know, if there's more building that's nonconforming, why isn't that an increase in nonconformity?
This is a question that I would ask the code officer. However, well, I know one's here tonight, so we can, we can ask Kim, but also I think usually communities have provisions about an expansion of a nonconforming use within an ordinance such as like 10% or there usually are provisions where folks who, if they were to purchase a legal nonconforming structure, they could, they wouldn't be able to not do anything. It would still allow for some sort of change to it. But I, I would refer to, to Chip on this one, if he doesn't mind.
So, so in this case, you know, we have square footage maximums.
We do, we do. And I think this is what the new regulations are usurping, that part of it. You can't mess around with the setbacks, but if you're doing something else that normally would make it more nonconforming, this new statute in my mind is saying it won't make it nonconforming. So it possibly would usurp probably the rule that, you know, you can only expand to 1,000 feet or to 30% more.
Now, why would it do that?
That's what this new statute's doing in my mind, because it's saying if it's already nonconforming and you put a ADU or accessory structure there, that won't make it not more nonconforming.
That's what the statute says.
Yeah.
So would a good second sentence in the line just say the, you shall not expand, but the, in this regard, and this is just me thinking off the top of my head, but in this regard, the ADU shall be created wholly within the existing structure and not create any sort of building addition or expansion.
You're, you're defeating the purpose of the statute, but I'm not sure that we're, we're watering it down, which wouldn't be a lot, allow, because what they're saying is, is that you're allowed to have with this new statute, more nonconforming. You're, you're not going to create more nonconforming, even though it is more nonconforming. I think you have to sit with the step setbacks because of the example we were just using. But I think if somebody was doing something else that normally would make it more nonconforming along the lines of the statute, they're saying, no, won't, that won't make it more nonconforming. They're allowed to do this. And it could be a variety of things. I'm not sure which ones would, wouldn't do it, trigger.
Well, I, I thought while we're in here, I don't know if it was a rule, statute, both. But I thought that made it clear that ADUs needed to meet setback requirements.
Yes.
Setbacks, we said that, yes.
So, so there's a dimensional issue sort of.
So it, it seems like maybe this is just best to be struck. Think it might be providing more confusion than it being useful. So maybe that's what I would recommend is just to be silent on it and just go with the, with the norm, with the rules that exist. I don't know how the board feels about that.
Seems to be looking for trouble with that. That's what this exercise is supposed to do. What might make more sense would be for maybe you guys to figure out what would, you know, what would trigger more nonconformity with this new statute and what wouldn't? And we've just said that the setbacks couldn't be messed with, but there's other things that would normally make the structure more nonconforming if you added an extra room or something that this statute's saying you can allow that because we're trying to encourage accessory dwelling units or ADUs.
Can I just run an example by, just to see if I'm on the same page on this? So let's say you have a garage that's 25 feet from the lake. So it's non, the garage is a nonconforming structure.
Legally nonconforming, right?
Right. And the, the owner wants to put in, in our apartment.
Oh, right.
Over the garage. My understanding is that if they're just doing that in, in the interior, that's fine. It's not going to increase the nonconformity, but if they wanted to put, let's say they wanted to put stairs, upside stairs leading up to that second floor. And those stairs are going to reduce the setback from 25 to 20 feet or something along those lines. That would be increasing the nonconformity and would not be allowed under this. Is that, is everyone in agreement that that's the right interpretation?
I, I think that's a good interpretation because what you're dealing with there is you're not increasing the size, shape or setbacks by doing that, allowing an in-law apartment, which might not normally be allowed with current laws, okay? Saying, no, you can't do that. But with the new law, you're not incurring any change in the, again, setbacks to the lake or whatever. But you're allowing a change within the house that normally would be making it more nonconforming. And I think the statute says, no, you can do that. It won't make this structure more nonconforming. That's the way I.
The outside stairs that might reduce the setback.
Right.
That would make it, and so that would not be allowed.
Yeah.
You'd have to figure out.
If the, if the house is, if the garage is 25 feet from the water, you can't extend it. You can't go closer to the water, nor can you extend it. So instead of it being 20 feet along the water, it's now 100 feet along the water, still 25 feet back. You can't do that because an ADU has to meet all setbacks. And it wouldn't be meeting the setbacks.
But what if the, so if it's 25 feet from the water? and the owner wants to put outside stairs that are still 25 feet from the water? They're not closer, is that increasing the nonconformity? Past interpretations, I think we've said, no, that doesn't increase it, but.
Yeah, um.
I'd have to say what side is it on? I mean, you could do it towards the water.
Right, well, yeah, the, the stairs aren't going to be any closer to the water than the existing garage.
Right.
So.
I've been looking at the, um, nonconforming article and in four, section four, uh, E2, there is some provisions related to increase in nonconformity in your ordinance, uh, which I'm sure you guys are familiar with. But this section could refer to that to make sure that it's, um, in accordance with, with those standards. And that might close, that might close it up a little bit more. Um, usually when you refer to like a defined section, that, that really helps your ordinance. I don't know what Chip would think about that from an enforcement point of view.
It's gonna be tough to know.
Um, because they really do spell out increase in nonconformity and then that way it refers to that. So it doesn't, um, contradict, uh, what's, what's already defined. That, that could be a way to, to provide, um, surety and clarity, in my opinion. But we can look at it, um, kind of offline and bring back some options to the next meeting.
But, by the way, Jemel, um, in that section, Article 3, nonconformance in G, we refer to accessory structures there. So are we including ADUs?
Um, this would be within the existing structure, so it would be within the principal structure, as I understand it.
Okay.
But don't we now have two definitions, Jack? I mean, one for accessory structure and one for accessory dwelling unit, and they're different.
We, in our definitional section, we have accessory structures defined.
But we'll, we'll need to include, um, we'll need to include some new definitions, one of which I assume would be accessory dwelling unit. And take that directly from the state, from the rule. Okay, I don't know if there's any more to be said about that. It's, um, I guess we can conclude, it's generally confusing.
It is, but I feel a lot more comfortable as a code officer, I think you as a board, if we can get some definition on what is new that won't trigger nonconforming and what doesn't? What parameters? Because you're going to have people coming in that have garages, that have bunk houses, that have sheds. They're going to want to make them into dwelling units. And they're already nonconforming structures, okay? So, I mean, and they have to have setback from the lake, they got setbacks, I mean, they're not going to do anything but make them a dwelling unit. What would, you know, now where we wouldn't in the past allow it, you couldn't turn a shed or a bunk house into a dwelling unit.
Yeah.
Now you're going to be able to, because there is this leeway. And what are the definite, what are the types of leeways that are allowed and what aren't allowed? And of course, you're going to go to subsurface, you're going to go to setbacks or, you know, you can't mess around with those. But what will be allowed that wasn't before?
And so, so maybe, maybe what we think about is including, um, in whatever section has the ADUs in it, we'll have a section on ADUs or a subsection on ADUs. And maybe plan to include as a piece of that, um, some discussion of that.
Hmm.
Um, um, you know, in the case of blah, 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 you know, now this would or would not constitute an increase in nonconformity and be specific about it, if that's what you're.
Yeah, exactly.
So that might be a place. Okay, so, um. And what's next, Jemel?
I can keep going along if you'd like.
Yeah, why don't we proceed here?
All right. Um, next in the memo is Article 7, Land Use Districts and Regulations. Um, on page two of the, uh, proposed changes, which is, um, this refers, the first, uh, required ordinance modification is adding, um, an accessory dwelling unit or ADU as a new residential land use within Table 1 of uses. Um, so we went ahead and did that. Uh, we, um, state statute requires municipalities to allow ADUs on any lot with a single-family dwelling in an area where housing is permitted, uh, provided evidence of sufficient water and wastewater capacity exists. Um, so we went ahead and allowed that, or proposed that they're allowed in all zoning districts except for resource protection and stream protection, uh, based on what we saw in the land use table.
Is there a reason why you have the code enforcement officer doing it as opposed to the planning board?
Um, it's typical for code officers to do these permits. Um, I do not know of many planning boards that do ADUs. We can do that, um, but it, again, it's more of a code officer, um, building permit process for ADUs typically.
Yeah, go ahead.
If I may, Jack, I think that, uh, I'd be comfortable with it. But in the case of if there was a question or something that, you know, I, I wasn't comfortable with, I'd bring it to the board, just like I have in the past with, you know, shoreland houses. Foresty was one example where it turned out that it was good I came here because we, we changed things. So I'd say if it fits according to the strict definitions of what we have and understand, I'm comfortable. And if there was anything outside of that, I would go to the, uh, chair and say, look, I'd like to bring this to the board. And I think that's one way of considering it.
Most of the disputes come up with shoreline residential.
Hmm.
I mean, about maybe making shoreline residential planning board. That's where we have all our disagreements.
Okay, we can add a, um, provision at the end when we get to it. Um, I'm thinking to ADUs saying something along the lines that the code officer, um, may request review and approval by the planning board at, at their discretion, something like that. Um, that's not exactly what it would say, but it would allow, uh, for Chip to do that for ADUs.
Um. I'm thinking. It might be more complicated to include that rather than to just say nothing.
Okay. Good idea.
You know, so we, two, two things come to mind. One is that, you know, we, we can pay particular, because this is new and it is confusing. And, um, uh, there are going to be some different circumstances that come up. Um, we talked a minute ago about trying to be very specific in the, in the ADU language, um, especially around what constitutes nonconformity and what doesn't, or increase in nonconformity and what doesn't. So we can pay particular attention to that. And then, um, you know, Jack's other suggestion was, was to make a, uh, planning board review with shoreline residential. Um, so that's the other option that, uh, he put out on the table as well. I don't know. Others have thoughts about that?
I, I have a different question. Jemel, Jemel, so the proposal, the draft here would prohibit, absolutely prohibit accessory dwelling units in resource, in the resource protection and shoreline protection zones? Is that?
Stream protection.
Stream protection, sorry, stream protection, yeah. Resource protection, do we allow new construction in, in all, do we allow in the resource protection and stream protection?
No, that's, that's why he did that.
Okay.
Because housing is not allowed in those zones.
That answers the question.
Hey, uh, uh, any, any thoughts on planning board review of shoreline ADUs?
I'm not feeling the need to do it.
I would agree, I think would immerse us in detail that would, if, if there's a controversy, we'll wind up hearing it. Uh, otherwise it could become a choke point of regulatory slowdown that isn't necessary.
Okay, let's, let's move on, um.
Okay. On page four of your packet, there, um, these are also required modifications based on state statute. Um, we added a series of footnotes, um, kind of going along with how the ordinance is organized. Um, associated with the minimum land area in Table 2, um, and dimensional requirements. Um, so state statute requires municipalities to allow multiple dwelling units on parcels where housing is allowed, providing evidence of sufficient water and wastewater capacity exists. So. Uh, let's see. Um, on page six, we added some footnotes to the end of the existing footnotes. And a lot of papers on my desk, sorry. Um, footnote 17, which would be for, um, footnote 17, uh, notes that multifamily dwelling developments designated as affordable housing in accordance with state statute in Article 8, um, Section 3C requires a density bonus. So it essentially flags that if you're doing affordable housing in reed fields, it just points you in the new, in the direction of the new, um, affordable housing provisions. Footnote 18, which is, um, it notes that the minimum lot size of 20,000 square feet is for the first dwelling unit with each additional dwelling unit, uh, on the lot requiring an additional 20,000 square feet. Um, so 18 would be, um, it's just in the village district, I believe. Footnote 19, um, which is, there's, there's a few of those, VR and AD, uh, notes at the minimum lot size of 40,000 square feet is for the first dwelling unit with each additional dwelling unit on the lot requiring an additional 40,000 square feet. And then finally, um, for the rest of the zones, um, footnote 20, notes at the minimum lot size of 80,000 square feet is for the first dwelling unit with each additional dwelling unit on the lot requiring an additional 80,000 square feet. So this really, um, satisfies the provision that multiple dwelling units are allowed on any lot where housing is allowed, single-family housing is allowed. So we went with the bare minimum. Um, for example, footnote 18, 20,000 square feet for the first unit, you need an additional 20,000 for each unit. You could be more lenient, um, the community could say, we only want 5,000 square feet for each additional unit or 10,000 square feet. Um, but at, at the minimum, it has to be 20,000 square feet. So we started at the minimum requirement, um, but the community again is welcome to, um, allow for more than that. But our experience is that communities, rural communities in particular, uh, just keep it at what the, the square, the minimum square footage is for lot sizes for each, for each dwelling unit. Sorry if that was confusing, um, but that's what those footnotes, um, try to tackle.
Jemel, would you agree that, um, let's see, on page, on your packet, page four, um, section space standards and dimensional requirements has the table and so forth. And there's some introductory language before the table. Um, and as I read it, it essentially says that. You know, it says what the footnote said. Now, do you agree that that's the case or is there a nuance I'm missing there?
I think it does, um, it just.
I, I'm not, I'm not suggesting, you know, that we eliminate footnotes, but I, I just, I just wanted your opinion on. To me, it, it looks like it conveys the same message, um, no?
It, it does, it just doesn't have like a how much you need for an additional. So we, we just wanted to be clear about that. But yeah, it essentially does say that, um, without any sort of, um, requirement for square footage.
Um, and one, one other, um, one other issue that it comes up a number of times here, but this footnote 17 is the first time that, that, um, that it comes up in the packet. And that is you use a term multifamily dwelling developments and.
Okay.
Um, I, I'm confused by that in a couple of respects. Um, and I would, um, ask if it might be a better idea to use, and I've seen this used a couple of different places, uh, use the term affordable housing developments instead of multifamily dwelling developments designated as affordable housing.
That would be fine, I think.
A couple of different reasons, um.
Okay, sorry.
Um, you know, multi, multifamily dwelling, um, is defined in, well, in a number of locations, but one of those locations is in the reed field ordinance. And multifamily dwelling, uh, is not the same as, uh, for instance, a two-family dwelling. And when you start talking about affordable developments and affordable units, you know, I could see a scenario under which, um, somebody might be talking about a, a two-family dwelling and they're looking to apply the density, um, the density bonus. But this terminology confuses that issue because multifamily and two-family are two different things. Does that make sense?
It does, yep. We could, you know, what, so what is your suggestion for, for that referral to the density bonus?
Um, well, a term that I saw used in several different places, um, and actually one place was in the, uh, the recent Augusta ordinance, they use the term affordable housing development.
Okay, um, that's an, is that, that's, that's interesting. I'd have to look at that, um, to make sure it would work here. Um, but then we would have to decide. So the way that the state statute works is that it's, it's a density bonus based on the base zoning.
Right.
So if you start, if you were to come up with a new land use that was affordable dwelling or development, um, we would have to figure out where, um, I guess, yeah, I mean, I guess we could, we could do that. That's something that I would have to talk about with, uh, staff at North Star about how to, how to do that. Um, this, this is the way that we've typically done it, is for multifamily developments. Cause usually with affordable housing, you have to, it's a scale issue. It's hard to really do small-scale projects at an affordable level, um, to provide housing in that way. Um, so I would feel comfortable leaving it the way it is. Or if you would prefer it to be different, I'd have to do some additional research and.
I, I was, I was tangled up the latter part of an afternoon trying to figure out, you know, multifamily dwelling. And, and multifamily dwelling development, given the definitions that we have. You know, multifamily dwelling is different than, you know, the two-unit dweller, or the, the, the single-family dwelling. And anyway, I just found the multifamily term confusing in this context. I understand that it, to qualify for the density bonus, it, it has to be on a land area that allows multifamily dwellings. I, I understand that, but.
Yeah.
But this is somewhat different to me.
Paula, can you hear me?
Yes.
Uh, this is John. I was just wondering, and, and maybe, maybe you, you've already considered all this, but is there any use or sense in trying to track the terminology and statute? Are, are these, these distinctions defined in statute anywhere?
Well, the most of the, you know, the nuts and bolts of it is in DECD's rule. So they, they did a rulemaking to implement the statute. And they do not have a definition of affordable housing unit, or.
They have multifamily dwelling.
Yeah, they, yeah, they have multifamily dwelling, and, and, and we have that as well. But those.
Three, a multifamily dwelling is defined, the rule, the rule is a building containing three or more dwelling units.
Well, I was just, you know, hoping that maybe, maybe we could track something that was already in rule or statute, but if it's not there, then, then not helping, not helping us.
We, uh, we took multifamily dwelling, we, we didn't make, we didn't just jot that down, we, we, we used that because of section of the section that we're going to refer to later, multifamily dwellings in article eight, whereas, which is where we put the affordable housing density provisions under. So we thought it would just kind of reinforce, like, where to look. For folks trying to utilize that bonus.
You know, that, that confusion that I was experiencing around multifamily dwelling units is part of what led me to suggest that we reorganize that section. Because it was in there, and it was, it was adding to my confusion about, you know, what do you do about two-family dwellings? You know, I understand the, you know, logistically, the, you know, the the economic aspect of it, and whether or not it's feasible to do small, you know, small developments, but nevertheless, it seems like somehow, they should be accommodated.
Yeah, I mean, we can, we can add for multifamily and two-family dwelling developments, if that would help out, because I think then you would get both. But again, I think it's going to be generally multifamily where you're going to see.
But again, you know, I saw some, some utility in, in, in breaking it out by each type of dwelling unit, because they've all got some requirement or requirements attached to them. A single family, it has nothing to do with the, you know, with the legislation, just a strictly a single-family house. But, you know, there are some requirements in the ordinance, and I'm, I'm still attracted by the idea of having a performance standard section that deals with, you know, dwelling units in all their various forms. A lot of it is existing language, and I would just be rearranging it, but.
Yep.
Let me interrupt you, I have a different. Jamal, I have a, a question that deals with the, not with public policy or what it should be or could be, but rather trying to comparing the law that I see with the proposal. So your proposal is that, as I understand it, you'll correct me, I hope, is that if you're, if there's going to be an additional dwelling unit on a lot, then the, the lot must be, in a sense, double, or at least the minimum lot size requirement therefore is doubled if you're adding a second unit? Is that what this does?
That's the minimum requirement.
But, but I'm looking at the law, the statute says a municipality shall allow on a lot with one existing dwelling unit, the addition of up to two dwelling units. So it's this A lot. The rule, the DECD rule says at least one accessory dwelling unit must be allowed on any lot where a single-family dwelling unit is the principal structure. So are we allowed to double the required size of the lot, just because someone's adding a, a unit?
These are for dwelling unit, principal dwelling units, not accessory dwelling units. So this would be, if you were to have a lot and you wanted to put two single-family homes, you would need, in footnote eighteen, you would need at least forty thousand square feet to do that. This does not include accessory dwelling units, this is just for principal dwellings.
And so, so, so what this does, what this is intended to do is to allow more than, than one one dwelling unit on a single lot. You've got to have.
Correct.
You've got to have the, you know, the, the minimum acreage to accommodate it, in accordance with local ordinance. But it lets you put more than one on a lot. Requires you to allow more than one on a lot.
And again, you could do, you could do five thousand square feet for each additional unit, if the town wanted to do that. You just can't require more than the minimum lot size, if that makes sense. So we just stayed at, yeah, you're correct, the double the size, that's the, that's what we are proposing now. But we're willing to lower it if that's what the community wants. But I'm, just wasn't sure where, how that would go in a rural community.
Well, I haven't heard any anyone advocating for that. I don't know if there's any thoughts about, about that. You know, lowering that requirement.
You know, always lower it at a later date, just to see, you know, how it goes. Or, or not, just leave it.
Okay, so, we get the footnotes. So we have two performance standards?
Yep. So on page seven and eight, we go into article eight, performance requirements and standards. We put the, these provisions primarily for affordable housing within the multifamily dwelling section, as I said before. And I'll just go through, do you want me to go through each of these one by one and discuss, or do you want me to go through the whole, the entire art, uh, changes, and then we can discuss at the end?
Yeah, why don't we do it that?
Okay, so, we add a new language in section three B, indicating that the mandatory parking requirements are for multifamily dwelling units designated as affordable. So according to state statute, they may not exceed two onsite parking spaces for every three units, if they were to meet the affordable definitions. We added a new subsection, section three C one, indicating that multifamily dwelling developments designated as affordable and intended to meet the noted state statute are eligible for a density bonus. And then it says, refer to section E for the, for the bonus. In the new subsection E, includes the language identifying the required density bonus, which is two point five times the number of units allowed for a development not designated as affordable. And then below, there's a series of subsections in section E, E one and E two, E three and E four. E one identifies the towns as designated future growth areas per the recently updated comprehensive plan, the village, village residential and academic zoning districts, so that's where this would be allowed. And identifies the definition of affordable housing rentals in accordance with main housing in U S HUD. And then, we keep going. Page four, E three identifies the definition of affordable home ownership in accordance with main housing in U S Department of Housing and Urban Development. And then E four identifies that all affordable housing units shall be restricted through a restricted covenant to ensure they maintain affordability for at least thirty years. So that would be some assurance that they would be designated as affordable for a long period of time. And that would be a covenant that's recorded in the Kennebec County Registry of Deeds. And I'll stop there for this one. And this is all required ordinance modifications per state statute.
One, one of the things that I keep seeing when I look at this section three, the multifamily dwellings, is that it's talking about a whole bunch of different things. You know, the title of the section is multifamily dwellings. And then there is discussion of multifamily dwelling developments. There is discussion about multifamily dwelling units. So it's, it's it's a lot of, of, of different things that are happening in this section. There are in fact some specific requirements that apply to multifamily dwellings. You know, like each building shall contain no more than four dwelling units. I mean, that's a, a specific existing requirement for for multifamily dwellings. And then when you start getting into the developments and the, and the density bonus and so forth, it looking at all of that, how it comes together or doesn't, it really drove me to think about this reorganization that I mentioned before, and to perhaps put the density bonus discussion in a single section in the performance standards. And then there's, I mean, it's, it's together, and there is no, there's no confusion about, you know, the definition of a dwelling versus a dwelling unit, and multifamily and two-family, and it's, it's separated out. There, there are a number of different definitions. Peter, you just showed me one, the multifamily dwelling.
Yeah.
That was from the rule, that was in the rule. And so it says, a multifamily dwelling means a structure containing three or more dwelling units. And so that's one example of this definitional stuff that, that, you know, I find confusing, when they're trying to talk about. You know, when I hear multifamily dwelling development, given this definition, you know, my assumption, without knowing any of the rest of this, my assumption would be that such a development is a bunch of structures, you know, multifamily dwelling structures. But that's not the case. Because the state statute, the rule and so forth, we're talking about units, not the structure. And so that's just part of what got me very tangled up. What I'm looking to fix.
We would be happy to talk about reorganizing the ordinance. I know that the planning board in the town are up against a deadline to approve these before town, for this town meeting, so I, we'd have to perhaps chat offline about how well, you know, how much, how long a reorg of this article would take us to do.
Yeah, and I, I'm not, I'm not looking at doing the whole article, I'm just looking at this first section, basically, and, you know. And if, in terms of timing, I mean, we haven't really even gotten to the point where, you know, I, I don't know if everyone else is interested in doing that or not, and we'd have that conversation, but you know, if, if as a board, that's where we decided we want to go. You know, I could, I could put my thoughts together in rough draft form and give them to you, if that would be helpful.
Yeah, just a, you know, another conversation outside of a planning board meeting would be good, but we can cross that bridge if and when we get there.
I mean, while, while we're talking about that, I mean, planning board members, you know, what, what are your thoughts about that? Is that something that you think would be useful, or?
I think it would, I think it would be very useful, and I don't think it'd be that difficult to group the, the affordable housing things as sort of additions or exceptions to the multifamily dwelling unit language that we already have.
Yeah.
So you don't have to jump back and forth, back and forth, back and forth.
It makes sense that altogether.
Other, other thoughts on that? John, Peter, John?
Paula, yeah, what, what you were describing, the beginning of the meeting, sounded, that, that seemed to make sense to me.
I don't know, no, it sounds good. I'm still, I'm sorry, I'm still hung up on, I'm looking at the rule in the statute, and I don't, which does not make the distinction between principal structure and accessory structure for what I'm talking about in terms of the size of the lot. It said, I read the statute as saying, if you can, under your ordinance, if you can build a house on a lot, you can build a second house on that same lot, as long as you need the setback, well, and once you don't violate setbacks. And, you have that in your board. It doesn't say that?
It does.
Good.
Yeah, so how can we double, how can we, but our, the footnote would appear to require doubling the size of the lot to build a setback.
No, but there, there are two, two different things going on there. The ADU thing is separate from the additional dwellings allowed on a lot. So the additional dwellings allowed on a lot is separate from the ADUs. And it would allow someone to put more than one one house on a lot under certain circumstances, but they have to meet the square footage requirement. So if, you know, if it's a district in which we require twenty thousand square feet, this would let them put another house on the same lot, but they would have to have another twenty thousand square feet to accommodate it.
So if they had a twenty thousand square foot lot, they're not going to be able to put a second dwelling.
You're saying, no.
That's not how I understand it, no. Well, that's the real dig that we have to understand with the affordable units, that this is being allowed now. And as you said, and correct me if I'm wrong, as you said, you can, as long as you can meet setbacks, subsurface, and if necessary, shoreline. But that left aside, I believe that this is going to allow for the affordable that you're not going to need, I mean, that you're not going to.
Now, the, the affordable piece is separate still.
Yeah.
I mean, the density bonus is different from the additional houses, is different from the ADUs. You know, they're kind of three standalone chunks of this thing.
Right.
And they have different rules around them.
Right, well, you understand that, but I'm just saying, I'm not saying it's a good idea or a bad idea, but I'm just saying, the statute and the rule, neither one makes a distinction between accessory or completely, or just another dwelling unit. And it does say, you know, we're not requiring municipalities to lower their minimum lot size requirement, but in a sense, they are for the purpose of a second unit. in a sense, they are for the purpose of a second unit. Allowing a second unit on the same lot. At least that's how I interpret it. Again, I'm not going to argue by whether it's a good idea or a bad idea. I'm just saying what I did to the law is. Jamal?
We scared him away.
Jamal?
I'm still here. I didn't hear a question addressed to me.
How do you, Jamal, here's a quick, I mean, you've been drafting these for other towns and you've been doing this same footnote, I imagine, said allows for doubling, since doubling the minimum lot size requirement, but you had a second unit, right? That's what you've been doing?
That's what we've been doing in, with, yes.
And has anyone run this by a town council anywhere else where someone said, is this inconformity with the statute now?
We have had some of our ordinances accepted by, by attorney, by town attorneys, yes. But I would suggest that this one also gets run by one as well.
Yeah, I'll do that. I mean, I'm not looking at the statute right now, but you know, this is the piece that DECD did, the, the guidance and and it says, if the municipality chooses to require a minimum lot area per dwelling unit, the lot area required may not be less for the first unit than for subsequent units. And there's a lot of discussion in here about, you know, what we couldn't do was, you know, if, if the first unit required twenty thousand square feet, we couldn't say that the, the, the second one required third. That's what this is saying. It can't, it can't be, the requirement can't be more than the first, than the first unit, the first house.
It could be less though, like in a more urbanized area, you could do, it's typical to see twenty thousand square feet and then five thousand for each additional. That's, but that's not in a town like Reedfield. That'd be like in Augusta or a more developed community. That's how folks can do like multifamily housing and, and a community usually is those kinds of allowances, but I think a minimum, just sticking to the minimum is probably what I would suggest for Reedfield. Should I go on to?
Yeah, please.
Accessory dwelling units, I think. Maybe we can circle back to the reorganization of the ordinance conversation. But I'm just going to keep going with on pages nine and 10, which is accessory dwelling units. We created a new section in Article eight with accessory dwelling unit language, section twenty nine. And essentially, we, we, there's required modifications based on state statute and recommended. So I'll go through the required ones. We added the new section includes a purpose statement where ADUs are prohibited and a set of standards and criteria. So ADUs shall have a minimum floor area of a hundred and ninety square feet per state statute. That's section twenty nine B three. ADUs shall be allowed within an existing dwelling on the lot attached to or sharing.
What do they, what do they mean by a hundred and ninety square feet? Is that the footprint? Could it be three stories high and have a hundred and ninety square feet for each floor?
It's the total square footage.
Of the footprint or of the whole?
Of the, I guess the gross living area, however, the ordinance defines square footage of a building.
We define floor area.
Yep. So that's how we, that's how we set it up is minimum floor area of a hundred and ninety square feet.
Okay, floor area. Thanks.
It, it, yep, moving along. ADU should be allowed within an existing dwelling on the lot attached to or sharing a wall with a single family dwelling unit or as a new structure on a lot for the primary purpose of creating an ADU. That's section twenty nine B five. ADUs are not allowed to be counted towards net residential density. That's section twenty nine B ten. And then no parking requirements for ADUs are allowed or can be required. Recommended. We suggested a maximum floor area requirement. Based on our experience, we, we required, recommended seven hundred square foot maximum, which is reflected in section twenty nine B three. Providing a maximum helps to maintain kind of like a natural affordability of the ADU, given their relatively small floor area. Some communities do percentages and that get, that can be pretty confusing. And if it's a very, very large house, then essentially, like say it's twenty percent of a ten thousand square foot house, that, that wouldn't provide an affordable housing option, most likely. Moving along, ADU should be allowed on legal nonconforming lots, so long as they meet any applicable nonconformance standards. Again, these are recommended, not required. ADU shouldn't have an occupancy or residence requirements for either the principal single family unit or the ADU. However, we did include an occupancy residency requirement in the language, given our experience and desires of other main communities. ADU should not have a requirement associated with the number of rooms, bedrooms in the unit. We just recommend the maximum floor area. And then ADU shouldn't have any sort of entrance requirements as well. So here's a set of required and a set of recommended modifications for ADUs.
Now, what's the policy reason for requiring that one of the units be owner occupied?
That is typical in small main communities that we have worked with. I think the concern with occupy, with not requiring occupancy is, you know, rentals over the weekend or like some sort of investment property that you would rent. But we recommend that they shouldn't have occupancy to provide more housing in the community, but most communities have have maintained or added a residency requirement. But I'll, I'll refer to the planning board on, on that one.
Is there a difference between occupancy and residency?
I think so.
Okay.
Residency, at least in laws implies an intent to remain for some period of time. Temporary occupancy is when you rent a room for a couple of months. And there's of course the gray area in the middle.
And so this says, the draft says, the owner must occupy either the single family dwelling or the accessory dwelling unit as their primary or legal residence.
Yeah, we, we, we included that in there because pretty much all communities we've worked with have, have wanted that. Sorry if that's confusing in the way we wrote it in the memo.
I find problem forcing this once the unit is built or designated, housing forced.
Well, and then, I mean, it goes on to say continued occupancy of the accessory dwelling unit upon sale or transfer of the property is conditioned upon the new owner agreeing to the owner occupancy requirement. So, you know, there's something there, you know, who went with this language, there's something near the.
But again, you take from residency to occupancy in that statement.
No, it, it, it says.
Does agreeing to the owner occupancy requirement.
And so you said that word occupancy. Well, it's, it's referring, says the owner must, must occupy as their primary or legal residence. And so it is that occupancy requirement that sale or transfer of the property is conditioned upon.
Seems like that can make it happen, so.
Well, I guess depending on the, depending on the circumstances, I mean, if somebody, if somebody wanted to buy it turn it into a vacation property, it would, you know, obviously it wouldn't fit the bill then, but.
Yeah, I think the idea of an AD, accessory dwelling units is for year round affordable housing for folks who can't afford a, a home in, in the community at that time.
Yeah, it probably is important to think back to the purpose of this, this legislation in the first place, which was to facilitate the development of affordable housing.
In its purest form.
I mean, I think of back like when I was just out of college, trying to move somewhere. I'm by myself, you know, I would look for a, a small affordable unit. That's, that's just something that I think about when I think of ADUs is folks trying to, you know, who have summer job or a low paying job while they're trying to find their way, they would, you know, an accessory dwelling unit is a, is a good way to provide that type of housing.
On, on either end of the spectrum. Yeah, the young and the old.
Right. So we can discuss these in the future if folks are, want to move on. Or we can do it now. I'm, it's all up, it's up to you guys. But this is a pretty, pretty general ordinance, not too progressive or anything. It's just very right to the point, basically.
So, planning board members, are there, are there things about the draft that you would like to see approached differently or things added or changed in any way? I mean, other than that reorganization piece that I put out there. Is there anything, is there anything else? I think there are a handful of definitions that came up in our conversation that we might want to include. One thing thing I might look a little more at is these definitions of, you know, dwelling units and the multifamily piece, because I still find that confusing. And for the purposes of our own ordinance, I think it would be a good idea to be clear on those.
And then?
Sure.
Thinking back to the septic regulations we had and who the onus was on for shoreline septic, it's been a lot of confusion, a lot of pushback and everything. I'd like to see something who the onus is on in transfer or sale of property that these conditions, these ordinances are part of the sale. And who's responsible if it's not done right? Is it the seller or is it the buyer?
So you're talking about the ADU discussion that we just had? Is there any guidance on that, Jamal? Do you know how that's been handled?
We do not have experience with the transfer, the specific transfer. I could ask some code officers who we work with regularly as contract planners about that, but I guess in, off the top of my head, I guess I would make, would make sense for me for the buyer to have to provide that evidence that, hey, we bought this property and we're maintaining it as an ADU. That's how I see it from my perspective. But again, I don't, I don't work to enforce these regulations as a code officer. So I, I don't know specifically, it's just my opinion.
Buyer being there.
It isn't that what generally happens if, if there's a nonconforming septic and it isn't grandfathered, I don't know, it could be grandfathered. The buyer gets stuck with a problem.
Well, would they, would it? Shoreland septic transfer, okay. On transfer, it's supposed to be in line, there's supposed to be a report and transfer. And I've had issues with the sale going through, them finding the things not working and it's supposed to be on the seller, not on the buyer.
In shoreline?
Yeah. Then when you, you know, you buy it, that's supposed to be the issue.
That's inspection requirement.
What's that?
You're, you're talking about the inspection requirement.
Correct. Well, inspection and if there's a problem.
Correct.
But I think it would be helpful to me at least to have some kind of clarity on that caveat emptor. Or, you know, it's, it's a requirement of the seller. But that would be very helpful with the experience I've had over the last year.
We, we, we can, we can, I'm not muted. Okay, yeah, we can look up some language and add that to the end of that.
Or if there's another example with another town.
Yep. We can do that. We do have one more section. I don't know if you want me to jump to that. Or if you want to stay. We, we did add a definite definition for accessory dwelling unit that's on page eleven. And it reads a self-contained dwelling unit located within attached or detached to or detached from a single family dwelling unit located on the same parcel of land. For, referred to Article eight, performance required. Performance requirement standard, section twenty nine, accessory dwelling units for applicable standards and regulations. And that first part of the definition mirrors the state statute, just to be consistent with the legislation. And that's an Article eleven definitions. That's the last page of the memo that we provided.
Okay. So we've identified a few issues that are outstanding. I think, I think my suggestion would be that where we go next is to a revised version of the actual language, the L U O language for our review. And there were not a lot of things that we talked about modifying. Probably the biggest one is that reorg- there were not a lot of things that we talked about modifying, probably the biggest one is the reorganized piece in the, in the performance standards. But there were these few things that we had talked about. Looking at some more specific language in the ADU section about what constitutes an increase in nonconformity and what doesn't. And and that we had talked, the issue that you just raised Chip about who's responsible for the occupancy requirement upon sale or transfer. So there's that piece.
On, on that increase in nonconformity. Well, I'm going back to, because we already have it in I'm looking at page nine.
Yeah, that's the, the greatest practical extent language that we've put together.
Okay.
Yeah.
But is there any reason that, that?
I think the statute for this purpose modifies what we are otherwise, what our
Relaxes, yeah.
Well, I don't, I don't know if that's, I mean, I think nonconformity, increasing a nonconformity, I think we, we spell it out here and I don't think that that is contrary to what the state law requires.
And we also have, and I think it's, I think it's the same in the L U O definition section. We have a we have a definition of increase in nonconformity of a structure. And that language on page nine, most of it comes from that definition. But we expanded it to address the greatest practical extent issue that we were trying to address when we made that change.
But the new state statute inserts what we've done and says, in certain cases, it will not increase nonconformity, and that's where I have confusion. What are those cases?
Yeah, and, and I guess I'm reading it differently because I'm, my, my understanding is that they're saying you can put it in as long as you're not increasing the nonconformity. We have a definition to say what that is. So I don't know, it seems like we could just reference that. I don't know, I guess we don't have to because it's there.
Jamel?
We could, we can provide some, some language referring to the definition and to the other language you were talking about in Article 3, just to make sure that it's tight and and it's, there's no sort of leniency that we can't see right now. I think that would be a good way to ensure that the language works. We can, we'll, we'll work on some language and we'll bring that back for review. If that works for you all.
Yeah, and, and so in, in doing that, you would, I assume, you know, take another look at the state requirement to make sure that we don't have a disconnect there.
Correct, yep.
I had a question, could if somebody has a house by the lake and they build an ADU and they don't use the house as their year-round residence, can they still have the ADU?
The way it's written right now, they would have to be a full-time resident of Reef Reedfield in order to have an ADU.
Okay.
Is that somewhere in the statute?
That's my question.
One second.
I, I don't think it's in the statute, I think it's their proposal for us.
It's a recommendation based on
It's around it. Because the statute says, a municipality shall allow an accessory dwelling unit to be located on the same lot as a single-family dwelling unit in any area in which housing is permitted.
The law allows us to be more open to alternative housing than the statute, but doesn't allow us to be more restrictive than the statute allows.
Well, the statute doesn't say anything about occupancy or residency.
Yeah, it's silent on that, doesn't say you can, doesn't say you can't, so.
Seems like you can't get any.
Very typical to have that.
You know, I I don't, I don't know everything it says, but I mean, I would, I would next go to rule and I don't know if the rule addresses it specifically, but that would be that would be the next thing.
I don't think the rule addresses it. Just a recommendation. And it's kind of part of the reason why I think that things in shoreline residential should be subject to planning board review. Because that's where we have all our problems.
Can I, can I ask a question, Paula?
Sure, John.
What is the, what is the operation of the term more nonconforming? Does that mean that it can't be done? If, you know, apart from apart from this new statute, was that the, is that the definition or is that the consequence of something being more nonconforming? Does that mean that it can't be done?
Well, even in this case, it talks about as long as there's no increase in nonconformity, that's the defined term. So so if whatever the proposal is increases the nonconformity, then it couldn't happen.
Well, see, see, I guess, I don't know, I was kind of reading this language the opposite way. I, I, I thought it was saying that, and I'm talking about the, the first Article 3 recommended subsection where you know, I, I, I was interpreting this to mean that, okay, if you, if you have a nonconforming structure, then if you want to do an ADU, it's not going to make that nonconforming structure more nonconforming. However you do it.
That's the way I interpret it.
Oh, really?
That, yeah, this is giving a pass.
John, which, which section, which piece are you reading specifically? Are you reading from the, the, from Jamel's recommended?
Yes, yes, the, the very first thing. Now, I, I, I'll have to tell you, I haven't done my homework in terms of studying the statute or the rule for that matter, although I have read over the rule. I'd want to do that for sure, but, but just looking at this language, I mean, that, that, that's how I would interpret it. That what this language is talking about is that, okay, you know, all things being equal, if you have a nonconforming structure, just because you add an ADU onto it, it's not going to make it nonconforming or more nonconforming.
Which paragraph are you on, John?
I'm sorry, this is, this is on just the, the beginning of the proposed modifications to the Reedfield Land Use Ordinance. And it's the first thing that Jamel did, Article 3 Nonconformance, Page 1, subsection, and this is, this is recommended, so I'm not sure whether we need to worry about it right now, but but, but, you know, in terms of the operation of this, and again, I, you know, I apologize because I haven't done my homework to study the statute, the statutory language, but, you know, th- this language to me reads like, okay, we're not, and, and I'm, I'm thinking about this in terms of what I, I understand is the gist of what this legislation was, which is, you know, they want to try to, you know, encourage people to make ADUs. So they're, they're saying that, okay, if you have a nonconforming structure, then just because you add an ADU onto it, it's not going to make it more nonconforming. It's, it's not going to lessen the nonconformance, but in other words, if, if something, if something is a, a nonconforming structure and it's going to be allowed, then just because you put an ADU on it, then that's going to not make it more nonconforming.
Well, John, if you have a nonconformant structure that's 50 feet from the water and you decide to add an ADU on it 700 feet and bring it to two feet of the water, that makes it more nonconforming.
I think we should go back to the I'm sorry.
I, I'm, no, I'm sorry, I, I, I want you to talk too because I, I'm just saying that I, I thought, and, and maybe I'm totally wrong about this, but I, my, my reading of this was that, that you know, this is, this is by definition saying it's not more nonconforming.
That
even though otherwise it would be not more nonconforming, it's not because of this law. Now, I don't know, the example that you gave though, I mean, I guess well, that, well, that's a good question, I mean, because it seems like to me if you're going to build something, if you're going to add an ADU on a nonconforming structure that's putting it closer to the water and, and the situation where you're describing, then then I, you know, that's, it's hard to believe that, that they would mean it that way.
If I could jump in, that was not the
And I, I understand, you know, why you're saying what you're saying, John, I don't, I don't agree, but I understand what you're saying.
Well, I think we should go back to
Yeah, well, maybe I'm wrong.
Man, the statute they put in, what's what you put in, says that an accessory dwelling unit is allowed on a lot that does not conform to the municipal zoning ordinance if the accessory dwelling unit does not further increase the nonconformity.
So that's the
Yeah, yeah.
Our traditional view, I think, is reflected in our land use ordinance was, if you were saying a, with 100 feet of the shoreline in the shoreline district, you couldn't add on to the house because that would increase the nonconformity, that was our traditional view, I think. But this law, I think, says that as long as you're not, just the mere, that the mere fact of building an ADU doesn't increase the nonconformity, now, if you're doing it closer to the lake, it does, then you have a setback problem, that's a problem.
No, I think, I think, I think based upon what you just read, Peter.
The nonconforming building does, which does not itself increase the nonconformity under the law now.
I think, I think that statement that, I think that statement that you read, Peter, you know, a minute ago, that, that, that made me think that, well, I'm wrong. You know, wha- what you said about as long as it doesn't
Our attempt to, I mean, our consultant's attempt to clarify it, which is law, I mean, a laudable attempt, but I think it, that it runs into the statute. And we would, which, I think says you can put an ADU up even though it increases the size of a structure that's a nonconforming structure, as long as you're not violating some setback or
Yeah.
otherwise messes up.
Okay, that, yeah, all right, that makes sense.
No, go ahead, Ben.
We just need that paragraph instead of this paragraph. The one you just read is basically right.
Or we don't, or we don't need it at all since it's already in the statute, you know, we can decide, you know.
I, I, I think it's probably a good idea to, you know, one of my thoughts was we need more, more language that clarifies this stuff in the L U O, so.
If I could jump in, it was definitely not our intention to exempt ADUs from nonconformities, I think it's just a an error in the way we drafted it, that's not what we were trying to say with, by that sentence at all. So we will modify it to make sure it, it says what it's supposed to, I, I see, I'm, I've been rereading it over and over and I could see how that would sound like if there, there's an exception for ADUs, but that was not our intention to create that. So we will fix that.
It was my error misreading it.
And also, Jamal, I, I thought that the state statute and the state regulations made it clear that shoreline zoning requirements of DEP still apply to ADUs.
All dimensional requirements apply to them. We were just trying to create some language to ensure that if that they are not allowed to increase any sort of nonconformity in a structure, and we'll, we'll reword it so it's more clear. Sorry about that.
If I may, I think where this might apply is, is if you have a shoreline nonconforming lot house and a barn, garage, or some kind of structure, that you could make any one of those an ADU because you're not physically going to be changing nonconformity. Right now, we wouldn't allow it because you're not allowed to put a occupancy in. That's why we have bunkhouses and other things. I think this might be covering that where you can take that bunkhouse, you can take that garage, you can, we talked about that before. And that can become a auxiliary or affordable, whatever you want to call it, unit. Because it's not really in strictest thing, increasing nonconformity with RL U O it is, you can't have a second occupancy without certain things. This is saying that in my read of this, that that would be allowed because you're not getting closer to the water. It already is close to the water, it's there, and that could become an accessory dwelling unit. So we're not talking about new construction or expansion. There are possibilities, many possible as I see, in our, you know, shoreline where this would be possible because of this nuance.
Yeah, but, I, I mean, the, the statute, all this stuff is clear that, that ADUs can be, they can be in the existing dwelling, they can be in a garage or something to that, so, or they can be
That's why you said it earlier about the outside stairway that
Right, right, that's changing, yeah.
That would be, no, we can say no to that.
But right now, I think we define that if you wanted to do that, it would make it more nonconforming. And this is saying that we can't do that anymore.
Well, I don't think we've done that, I think those, the, the floor area things, you know, I think we put that into place instead of saying that you know, the, you know, more building in and of itself was a nonconformity, I think we relied on the square footages instead. You know, in, in the shoreline. And I, I think the definition that's in the L U O also, you know, it, it's, it's quite specific about what constitutes nonconformity and well, it does say, it includes the not limited to list, but, you know, reduction in setbacks, you know, increase in lot coverage, height of the structure. But it doesn't talk specifically about, you know, more, more structure within whatever the offending setback was. And my sense was that we had backed away from that interpretation.
And again, I come back to you on the enforcement side saying that that's the reason. That there's things like bunkhouses because they're not allowed to have a second dwelling. And so they can have a bunkhouse that has beds with no bathroom or, you know, running water.
Yeah.
And I think this would change that.
Well, it was clearly their intent to change that.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
That's what this is all about.
Right, exactly.
Okay, so anything else we should, excuse me, what should we talk about further? Or we can I guess anticipate a new draft? And that will be the focus of our next conversation, I'd like to figure out when that's going to be, but.
All right. I think, I think we Uh, I, you, I think, I think we, there was one other thing that you talked about, about the terminology. About, uh, um, multi. Multi, uh, family dwellings or something like that.
Yeah.
That would, we wanted to get those, that terminology straightened out, I think.
Yeah.
And then, the other thing I would say is, you know, we probably need some more clarity about. Whether or not the CEO or the board is going to look at these things.
Um, well, I mean, you know, the way, the way to decide that is to figure out, you know, how we want to set up the table of uses. And right now, in the draft, um, uh, Jemel has included, um, CEO across the board for ADUs. And so, you know, certainly the option is there, if that's what the board wants to do, um, uh. Jack's suggestion was that the planning board do the shoreline ones. But, um. There was, uh, some sentiment, um, against doing it that way and and keeping it CEO. Um, but the option is there, um.
We're not saying that the planning board would do shoreline forever. But to start off till we get this down. And then, what we've done before is then turn it over to the CEO once we've sort of. Got the. The problems resolved.
Well, you know, that's, that's exactly what I was thinking, that, you know. This is a brand new thing, and that, uh, it it may be more prudent to. Spend a little time, um, making some decisions about these things before. You know, we. Or, you know, until we, we really, everybody understands how these things work. That would be my suggestion, but. I'll go along with whatever everybody wants to do.
Others on that?
I think it makes a lot of sense.
I'll stay with what I said before. I don't think it's necessary, so. I'll stay with what I said before, too. I mean, unless. We're going to shift, we have to. I mean, yeah, it's not going to be the end of the world either, but but we would have to create a, then ordinance that. As a temporal, such, this is how it's going to be done with for until some date, and then we're going to shift responsibility perspective.
No, I I think, I think what Jack is talking about is that, you know, we've, we've made this shift before, just by changing the ordinance, I mean. In our change package for the year, you know, we've changed some of those, um, for various reasons. From, you know, planning board to code enforcement officer, or the other way around.
To flat, no, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so they're having those change in the table of uses. So I I think that's the mechanism for it, if it was to happen. Brandon?
I think, I think we'll get a flood. A lot of you can't take it aside. They want a second can.
That's the downside to doing it that way, um. The upside is that you're going to have control. The downside is if this is a popular. Nuance. And there is a flood of things, then you are going to be very busy, whereas. Maybe the code officer could, you know, like I do now. Parse it out, where I'll take what I can handle, or I'm comfortable with. And when I'm not, I send it to y'all. If you do it the other way around, you're going to get everything till you can change the ordinance.
Well. The other. The other issue is that, in the planning board process, we notify butters, in the CEO process, there's no notification over butters. So I think you're, you're going to run into a lot of opposition. Or upset people, right? If they find out later that a CEO has granted a permit and there's nothing that they can do about it.
What can they do about it anyway?
Well, they get notified, if they're notified by the planning board, then they have an opportunity to come to a hearing. And say what they say.
I also, you gotta be, they're gonna do that, so, I mean, I I don't really have an interest in moderating those disputes.
I mean, obviously, if the CEO makes a mistake about that, they could appeal to the appeals board. They understand it.
If they're within the time period.
Yeah, and and from my perspective from planning, it's, you know, there's a. Set of standards, and it's basically boxes being checked. To make sure that those are met, um. I'm not sure how much discretion the planning board would have of approving and not approving. An ADU if they met all the standards.
That's my concern.
Yeah, well, maybe, maybe as a middle ground, um, we could agree that, you know, when you get the first bunch of these. That you bring them in and we'll talk about it, so we know what's going on.
It's a good idea.
Um, you know, and not that we would necessarily make the decision, but we could talk about it, and it might. Help us all understand better what's happening and what the issues are. And hopefully, there won't be a thousand of them, but.
If you have that pattern there, you have that occupancy. That rules out most of the tenants, because they're not year round residences.
Well, I wondered about that, though, whether whether it had to be year round, or you kind of.
Well, still.
Well, yeah, I suppose you get a.
First, that's permanent residents go to Florida for the winter. There's still. Permanent residents, occupants. They're just out there. There's a lot of them, right?
Okay, uh, Jemel, did you have anything else?
I do not. I have some pretty clear marching orders, so we'll. Um. Do some additional modifications and be ready for. For the next meeting, when, uh, when you guys want to see these again.
Okay. Um, yeah, we can have some, have some conversation about scheduling, because it turned out to be a real problem. Um. So, I took the, um. CID recommendations to the last select board meeting, and they agreed to do a special town meeting. And Eric has determined that that special town meeting hasn't been, uh, advertised yet, it's not on the calendar. But the plan is, is formulating around the twenty seventh of February. Which is a regular meeting date for us. And the select board has to hold, um, a warrant article hearing on any warrant article that's going to town meeting. And. The date that has been chosen for that is the thirteenth of February, which is our other regularly scheduled meeting. So, we've got a few different options, um. One of them is that, you know, we could go ahead and, um, I have no idea what the attendance would be. Particularly at the warrant article hearing, and I don't know if anybody's going to show up, and that guy. Uh. We could go ahead and and meet on the thirteenth, but, um. Either Jack or I would need to attend the warrant article hearing. Because it's completely unclear what could come up, and if there are going to be questions and so forth. So that caused me to think, well, you know, it's just going to be awkward, plus we couldn't have this room, we have to. Because that's where that's going to be held, is here. I don't know how long it's going to be, um. So, a lot of unknowns around that. Um. We could. Change the dates and do something on an off day. Or an off day. Um. But there's a lot going on on the town calendar, and. I looked at, um. I looked at calendar, because there are some days when there's more than one committee meeting happening, and space is going to be a problem. Um. The. Wednesday, the seventh, um, seems to be open in terms of space here. Um. That's a week earlier than, you know, that's only, you know.
Excellent.
It's only a week from now, and so that probably is not going to be. Be enough, uh, time for Jemel to get a new draft together, and for everybody to have a chance to review it before then, so.
We have one solid issue right now in front of us. When you find the time, and that's the merger over on. Quite hard.
Yeah, well, that's.
Well, just saying, there's only one thing that's not a great goal.
And. So, uh, the other options would be, um. We could do the. There are some other committee meetings. Uh, the budget committee, I know, will use this room. Um, they're in here on the fifteenth. Um, nobody wants to do this on Friday night. Um. They. Uh, library board trustees is on. Oh, there aren't Valentine's days.
What about the twentieth?
Uh, the twentieth, um, the Church Road sidewalk public hearing is at six thirty that night. The twenty first and the twenty second are both blank right now on the. On the, on the website. I don't know if there's, you know. How likely is it that there's something that hasn't been entered?
Unlikely.
Unlikely, okay, all right. So, twenty first and twenty second are possibilities.
Days of those?
What's that?
What days are those?
Uh, Wednesday and Thursday. So what's everyone's calendar look like for twenty one and twenty two?
Mine with me is Jack.
Okay. Yeah. You could do those, Peter?
As far as I know, I'm good with neither one.
Brandon? John? Thumbs up. That was a thumbs up, you're way up. Okay, all right. Um. Okay, um, Jemel, um, would your schedule allow either of those dates?
Yes, they're both open at six thirty again.
Uh, yeah.
Yeah. That works for me.
Okay, all right.
Either of them.
All right, well, why don't we just pick one? Uh, why don't we go with, um. Wednesday, the twenty first?
So that would be in lieu of the other days.
In lieu of the others, right. Um. And, you know, the question becomes, um, you know, I guess I'm, I'm hoping that if we get this, um. You know, it, perhaps a week ahead, does that sound feasible, Jemel? And if everyone has sufficient time to review it, I would, I would like to think that maybe we can work through all these remaining issues. And come to agreement on what the final draft will be at that meeting. Does that seem reasonable to everyone, or do you think we're going to need more conversation?
We can, we can meet that deadline.
Sounds good.
And, you know, and part of the reason I ask is that, um, I had mentioned that I would think about a schedule for, you know. Weaving this and for getting it done. I had a conversation with Eric. And he is, um, he is good with. Receiving whatever the final L U O changes are going to be, getting those sometime in the week of the eighteenth of March. So we, you know, I think we have sufficient time, but we have to hold a public hearing on whatever the change package looks like. And, so I was looking potentially. Um. To the. Fifth or the twelfth. Of March for a public hearing. Um, Chip, what's the, what's the notice requirement? Is it ten days or two weeks for a public hearing? Ten days? Ten?
I thought it was two weeks.
Five or.
Ten days don't count, yeah, ten days. I'll wipe out.
Yeah, um, and so if, you know. If we're doing. We're doing the twenty first. Yeah, if it's, if it's more than ten days, that concludes the fifth for a public hearing. Um, why don't, why don't you check and make sure, you know, we know exactly what the, the notice requirement is? And then, we can, um. Choose either the fifth or the twelfth of March for public hearing date. Um, does anyone have any known conflicts with either of those dates?
I'd love to hear on the fifth.
On the fifth, okay. Anyone else? Five and twelve? You're not sure?
I'm not sure.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, well, why don't, why don't you let me know? Um, so Don has a, a conflict on the fifth. If there are other conflicts, um, if you can let me know within the next day or two. And we'll find out exactly what the notice requirement is.
Drop them up to Henry, too, to get in.
Yeah, yeah. And, um. And maybe we just, um, you know. Tentatively target the twelfth. That would allow. Don's participation, and I think it gives us enough time. I doubt very much that we're going to get so many comments that it's going to take. An extended period to. You know, review those and and make any necessary changes, um. But if we did it on the twelfth, um, that would. Give us, you know, a week essentially to make any adjustments that were necessary. And then get it to Eric and the select board the following week. So. Okay, so we will do our discussion of a revised draft on the twenty first. Um, likely, the public hearing will be on the twelfth, possibly on the fifth, more likely on the twelfth. And we'll find out what the notice requirement is. And we'll let everyone know. If there are any conflicts with any of those dates, let me know, and then we can figure out how to accommodate that. Okay, well, thank you very much, Jemel. We appreciate all the time you took with us tonight. It was extremely helpful. And, uh, we'll look forward to seeing the next draft, and, um. Um. And if you'd like, uh, you and I can talk, um, about the reorg piece. Is that how we'd like to do it?
Yeah, thanks for having me again, and thanks for, uh, your patience as I. Uh, worked with you guys with the town for the first time, so we appreciate that as well, um. Yeah, let's, uh, plan to, to talk offline about. The reorg, um. And I'll, I'll talk with my, my staff as well, and we'll, we'll tackle it.
Okay, great.
Thank you, have a good night.
Good night.
Night.
Bye.
Okay, um. Oh, I realized I didn't send out the finished memo to the select board, to everyone. If you'd like to see it, I'll send it around, and. I'm sorry, I just, I got, I got, um, consumed with, uh, having to take it to them, and I. So I'll, I'll send, I'll send that again. Um. And I think the only other thing, we do have a set of minutes, and, uh, Jack and. Peter commented on those. Are there any other comments or edits on those minutes?
On the, on the last draft. The one that reflects my comments is on top of Jack's. I just see one typo, um. The under Norwich Technologies. Fortline, whatever, we're, we're adding commercial, industrial, the word. fourth line, whatever, we're we're adding commercial, industrial, the word add should be added before infrastructure because it's it is there when we repeated that on the next page, so.
Yeah.
There's also a typo under number two pushing storage. Um, but that's the last line or or above where it says the address is at existing structure should be exceeds.
Yeah, I actually already fixed that on my lap here. Anything else on this? And if not, can we take a motion?
Will we accept the note of revision?
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Brandon, make my brain dim. No motion, the second, uh, discussion. I'm not all in favor. John? I need verbal because you're zooming.
Aye.
Jack?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.